Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll so that we can establish a quorum?
Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Chenier, and Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Thank you. Members of the public and members of the council, I would ask if they would captains, Dave Rizley and Norm Leong, to please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And after the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like all of us to have a moment of silence in memory of Tara Sullivan. Well, I'll have the opportunity, I know, to speak about Tara and about the events that have shaken our city over the last week, but I think it is very important and appropriate that we begin tonight's council meeting remembering a dear and important member of our Sacramento family, a young woman who was just beginning her career and her dedication to serving the public in the most dangerous profession of them all. And it's a very hard time for Sacramento, but we're coming together. We will continue to stay together for the family, for the community, and for the men and women who put on the uniforms. So let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we will have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, captains. Let us all, if we might, please, quiet in the chambers, and let's all bow our heads in whatever way you pray and remember Tara Sullivan and her family. Let's begin our meeting this afternoon with some two special presentations. I'd like to turn it over first to Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I too just want to second what the mayor said about one of our esteemed officers that lost her life, and I think we all have heavy hearts because of it. But this afternoon or right now, we want to recognize some positive things that are happening in the north area, in the city of Sacramento. And so we have two resolutions that we're going to present that will acknowledge some of the extraordinary work that's taking place and some of the people that are helping to make it happen, some of which are organic to District Two in North Sacramento, and some are not. Some saw the value and saw an opportunity to come and participate and to help young people do some things that they probably maybe did not know were possible. So with that, I would like to ask Jack and Jackson Crawford to come to the podium, please, as well as members of Neighborhood Wellness and 916, Inc. I see Mrs. Jefferson. I'd like to ask Mrs. Jefferson to come up as well to the podium. In fact, all of you that, yeah, all of you that are here to support, come up to the podium. Only a couple of people will speak, but I think it's important to show this group of people that are doing some extraordinary things in North Sacramento and particularly in the Del Paso Heights community. So several months ago, some groups started gathering. In fact, it's probably been a year or so, or maybe a little bit longer, but they started gathering to bring young people together to really help expand their minds and to show some of the things that were possible. And what has come of that is really, it's one of the gifts that we're going to share tonight with all of the council members, as well as those of you that are in the audience can hear it. But these young people, who a couple of people will speak about, have written and produced and will be presented to a number of people, a very special book. You know, a book that talks about issues and challenges and poems and dreams and aspirations and really an illustration, I think, of the things that are possible when the right people are at play. And so we have, I'd like to very first ask Jack and probably Jackson even more so than Jack, but both to really say some words about why they came into our community and then what that experience has been. And then we'll have Dr. Gina Warren and then maybe Ms. Jefferson say a few words as well just about the collaboration of things and people that have come together to really do something very special in District Two. So maybe Jack and Jackson.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight. I'm thrilled, obviously, with the opportunity to collaborate with my son on something that could positively impact our community. As we reached out into the Del Paso Heights community, Ms. Warren and others were quite welcoming with regard to this idea of bringing in entrepreneurship curriculum. We believe that entrepreneurship empowers people, and what we found was that when given the opportunity, although we were rolling this program out at two different schools, arguably one of the most expensive and accomplished schools in the Sacramento region, and then one of the more challenged areas, that the ideas were on par with each other and that it was a matter of resources and support and curriculum. And really what we found was that these young people were coming up with innovative and creative ideas for critical things in life, things around security at the school, food, clothing. They were not talking about sort of gaming and applications or, you know, other things that were entertainment-related. They were really focused on the critical aspects of life, and it was fun to see them innovate and take ideas from their head and put them on paper and then present them at a year-end showcase event in front of, in front of a hundred or so of, you know, community leaders and parents. And I was just so proud of the students, and obviously I was thrilled that my son played such a significant leadership role with this. So I'll pause there and turn it over to Jackson, because he knows when I get excited, I talk a lot. But I'm just, we felt incredibly grateful that we were welcomed into the Del Paso Heights area, and we were incredibly impressed with what we saw there. And our view is that the more resources and support around education and entrepreneurship in that community, the more amazed that we all will be.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Just to add on to what he's saying, thank you again for the recognition. From my perspective as a high school student and coming into Del Paso Heights, I was amazed and impressed with the growth of the students throughout the club. For the first couple of weeks, we had smaller numbers of students, and more students came. And to see by the end at the year-end showcase event, students presenting onstage their projects that they have been working on in front of a hundred people, it was just great to see. And as much as it's an amazing opportunity for the students to learn entrepreneurship, I was really grateful for the opportunity to work with the students and to learn, because the best way to learn is to teach. And so, again, really grateful for the opportunity and glad that we can continue this and grow it and see where it goes.
And I want to, I want to thank your father, but Jackson, I think more importantly, you, for showing at such a young age, you know, the desire to reach out and touch other people. I think it's a wonderful quality to have, and I think it'll serve you well as you go forward. What school are you at now?
Country Day.
At Country Day.
Yes.
Young man coming from a more affluent community into the, into the Del Paso Heights community and really offering what you have to assist. So I want to, I want to thank both of you because you didn't have to do it. So we have resolutions for you, but we're going to hear from Ms. Jefferson and then Mrs. Warren.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you, City Council. I have two of my girls here today. This is Serenity. And this is Samara. Sanaya, I'm sorry, Sanaya. Always get her name wrong. And I just want to tell you, I mentor girls at Martin Luther King Jr., and the growth that I saw in these young ladies when Gina asked me to bring my girls to the entrepreneur program, one of my girls won first place and one of them won fourth place, but it didn't matter. The growth that they showed in that program was phenomenal, and I saw them come from looking down when they talked to standing up, using their hands, presenting things. I'm like a proud parent, and I just want to thank Gina for inviting my girls to this program. It was fabulous. It was fabulous, and I'd like to see it go further and maybe even have them be mentors to some other kids.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing your team together and everybody working together.
Absolutely.
Because you are a leader in the community.
That's how we grow.
And we need to, we need to be connected.
Yes, we do.
So thank you very much as well.
Yes, we do.
Dr. Gina Warren, please. Some of you may know that I know this young lady here.
Your better half, for sure.
Hello, everyone. Before I even speak on Neighborhood Wellness Foundation, I would like the, those who participated and who actually presented, I want you to stand up, Zell, Chris, Vernon. I want, I want the, everyone to know how amazing our youth are, that they are capable of nothing short of greatness when given the opportunity and the resources, but most importantly, the authenticity of partnerships of Jack and Jackson and Cameron and Ian, which you'll hear about later with 916, Inc., and then to have the amazing support of Christine and Trinisha with Neighborhood Wellness. But our mothers, who struggle every day just to make ends meet and come and show up with their children every day, is critical. And so Neighborhood Wellness Foundation was founded in the mission of disrupting intergenerational trauma and poverty. And in order for us to do that, we have to lower barriers and improve stability and also try to level the playing field in terms of equity with educational attainment, but a lot of the kids aren't even in the game, let alone on the playing field. And so what we do is we partner with authentic folks who come in and are engaged in our community and continue to engage, and we hear of the amazing work that these young kids do. And so next, we're going to hear about 916, Inc., but I just want, I want all of you guys to give them a round of applause, because these young kids are just absolutely amazing.
Let's have Cameron, let's have Cameron come to the mic. Let's have Cameron come to the mic.
Yes.
Cameron, because this young man also came into our community and really stepped up. And it just so happens that we had a chance to meet, but I had known Cameron's grandfather for some 30 years or so, and I was really pleased to know that, you know, that your grandfather and I had the relationship. So I knew what type of young man I thought you would be, and it turned out that you have been everything and more and very supportive of our community. So would you, would you, would you tell the council and the audience about 916, Inc., please?
Yeah, so the partnership between 916, Inc. and Neighborhood Wellness Foundation was a genuine partnership that was really focused on, you know, driving literacy and educational outcomes for our youth. And what we saw was this valuable partnership in where you had a genuine trust built between two organizations, which allowed the kids to ultimately create a space in which they could, you know, really learn and expand their growth as not only citizens, but also as individuals and students. And so I was just amazed by the transformation and hearing the books and the stories that you're going to hear from Ian later, I hope, was really transformational to see the youth and the way in which they ultimately grew throughout those programs. So I want to thank that partnership and Gina for all her work, as well as Ian for committing to that work in Del Paso Heights.
Excellent.
So Jay Carter, Aaron Cordoza, Ian, please, and Trinisha. And Sonia, please, from Neighborhood Wellness Foundation. But this is one of the brother-to-brother leaders and who was also a poet, an amazing writer, and was instrumental in terms of mentorship for our young kids for 12 weeks as they worked on developing the book that they just recently published, as well as Trinisha Scott. And so, you know, we just need people to understand the value and the power and the intelligence and the amazing things that our neighborhood is doing for our kids that were not underprivileged or under-resourced. So you can mention real quick them, Ian.
Well, I grew up in the Del Paso Heights area, and I didn't have the opportunity or the resources growing up. And with them to have the opportunity and resources to have programs like 916 and Entrepreneurship in Del Paso Heights is awesome. I worked with these kids in both of the programs, and they're just on their way to being successful with more resources and opportunities.
I'd like to thank all those who participated in 916, Inc. and Entrepreneurs Club for putting their trust in us, to give them the opportunity to put their power of their pain to pen, that they use the power of the pen to express themselves and to be able to be actually published authors of Write Like a Boss in Neighborhood Wellness Foundation in Del Paso Heights. And I thank all of those, the 916, Inc.'s and also the entrepreneurs, that they trusted us, and we want to continue to have a sense of belonging for them in our neighborhood.
Very good. So, so how many books did we bring today? Did we bring enough?
Oh, that's me. Hi, I'm Ian with 916, Inc. I would love to be able to gift so many books to all of you, but it is sold out.
Oh.
So yes, at 916, Inc., we work to empower youth through creative writing and really help with self-expression, social emotional development, and literary arts skills. We were incredibly grateful to have this opportunity to partner with Neighborhood Wellness and Brother to Brother and Sister to Sister. A special thank you to Cameron and Matty at Social Venture Partners for really establishing and creating this collective. And here is the book. You can look at it, and that's the best I can do for you right now.
Write Like a Boss. Very good.
Inside this anthology are the published prose and poetry from some of these very gifted Inc.'s.
Very good. So I'm going to read just a couple of lines from the resolutions that are, that we're going to hand out today or this evening, and then we'll take a few pictures, if that's okay. All right. So the first one says, "Recognizing Jack and Jackson Crawford for their dedication to the community and the Entrepreneurs Club." So this resolution will go to you all, and then you can decide where you want to put it. But is a special recognition from the City Council for the good work that you've done. And then it says, "Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the city of Sacramento that we do hereby recognize Jack Crawford and Jackson Crawford for their dedication to the community, for expanding the Entrepreneurs Club to the Del Paso Heights neighborhood." And I just want to say to Jackson, is Jackson, there he is. So let me just say, Jackson, when I was 14 years old, I lost my father to a car accident. And how special it is to see for you and your father to be able to work on something like this, that you'll be able to talk about forever. So cherish the moment and the time that you guys have, okay? So it's very, very special to see both of you do that. And then to 916, Inc., it says, "Recognizing 916, Inc. and their dedication to the Sacramento or to Sacramento and the Young Creative Writers Club." So again, we want to thank you so much for coming in, helping these young people, actually, as Trinisha said, put their pain, their thoughts, their dreams to pen, and now they're published authors. That's something no one could ever take away from them. So, audience, would you please give these wonderful people a round of applause? I would love, I would love for my council and the mayor to join us down with all of you wonderful.
Fun. Let's do it.
Can we get the security to remove the? You guys are going to come up here. I'm going to try. I know I'm going to, I got to get this lighting right, because, okay, good. I'm going to get on this chair. Okay, where are you standing?
I'm standing here, and that's blocking the camera.
Yeah, because I want to make sure I get this shot.
Okay. Everyone, sweeten. All right, this is the first camera, right here. Okay, right here. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Three.
Okay, look right here. And if you can move over just a little bit so I can see the mayor's chin. But I want to see you, too. Okay, here you go. You're blocking her just a little bit. There we go. Perfect. Gina, move over a little bit. One, two, and one, two, and three. Thank you.
Ian, I'll be in touch with you. Good to see you. I'll be in touch. Yeah, can I come?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Warren and Ms. Warren and all the people who serve our, serve our youth. Well, we have one more presentation, and it's, turn it over to Councilmember Harris. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, the good work that happens in the city of Sacramento takes many forms, as you could see from what just transpired. And now the city has received an accolade from the Alliance for Water Efficiency and our Department of Utilities, and if you'll all come up to the podium, please, recognize, they got a gold level of recognition from the Alliance for Water Efficiency reflecting the Department of Utilities' very significant efforts in developing and running an exemplary water conservation program. That takes a lot of forms. The Department of Utilities has supported efforts like the rapid installation of water meter infrastructure, automatic leak notification process, distribution system management, and provoking landscape efficiency rebates like the drought-tolerant landscape program, smart controllers, water waste enforcement, water conservation outreach and education. In other words, the city of Sacramento is really at the forefront of being a sustainable city water-wise, as well as teaching our residents how to conserve water so that we can be very resilient in the face of climate change, which is really upon us now. So congratulations to the Department of Utilities for bringing this award to the city of Sacramento. And if you'd like to say something, please do.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. I'm Sarah Foley, and this is Tia Lebherz. We are co-executive directors of the California Water Efficiency Partnership. We are here today on behalf of the Alliance for Water Efficiency. The American Water Works Association has a national standard for water conservation. It outlines the elements for a comprehensive utility approach. It is the only known standard on water conservation for utility benchmarking. Because AWWA does not certify anyone to this standard, the Alliance has volunteered to evaluate and rate its members as to how they are complying. An applicant for certification must fill out detailed information about compliance, which is verified by AWE. Tears of platinum, gold, and silver have been established to recognize achievement. To date, only seven utilities in North America have been recognized. The city of Sacramento now becomes the eighth utility to be so certified. As the AWE chapter, California chapter, the California Water Efficiency Partnership is pleased to present the city of Sacramento a gold certification for G480 compliance. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Roshnidaaz. I'm the Sustainability Program Manager for the Department of Utilities. I want to first and foremost thank Alliance for Water Efficiency for coming out and presenting this to the city. I also want to thank Mayor and all the members of the council for continuously supporting and providing guidance on various efforts that resulted in this gold certification for the city. And lastly, but not least, I want to thank William Granger, the Water Conservation Administrator, and the group that I work with, who go out every day, meeting with the community and implementing and ground-truthing most of the initiatives and programs that we have put into place. So without all of these efforts, and one more person, people that I forgot to mention, but lastly, not, not the least, is Bill Bousset and Jim Pfeiffer, who have provided guidance to us and supporting us with these programs. So I thank everybody. It would not have been possible without the support of the city, the team, the council members, and the directors in achieving this certification. The Alliance would like to provide the certificate to the city. We would appreciate if the council members would come down and receive the certificate for the city.
Please join me, ma'am.
Of course.
Me, too.
You go. You're welcome to come, too. You're welcome to come, too. Thanks to see you. Congratulations.
Thank you for coming.
Sure thing.
Are there some cities that just get silver?
Gold, like, gold, two or three silver.
Two of these, I mean, so it's a distinction.
It is.
Congratulations, William. Awesome.
So we have somebody that wants to take a picture.
Always said gold is better than silver.
True.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Terrific. Madam Clerk, is there anything on the consent calendar that needs to be noted or changed?
Nothing to be noted. I do have four speakers on item number one on consent.
Okay, are there any members that want to pull off any, any of the consent items? If not, why don't we take a motion? Second. Moved and seconded. Thank you. Let's hear from the four members of the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first is Francisco Garcia. Daniel Sarskow, I can't read the last name, and then Les Light.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Francisco Garcia. I've worked in the catering department at Golden One Center since it opened in 2016. Before that, I also worked at Arco Arena for 13 years. I'm a proud member of Unite Here Local 49 and E-Board Member for LACLA, Labor Council for Latin American Advancement. I've spoken before about the Sacramento Republic project and our belief that if it's done correctly, it can be a great project for Sacramento. It can bring good jobs to people who really need it and build up the community. My union is eager to continue dialogue with the Sacramento Republic to ensure this project is a win for everyone. We hope that soon we can come out in full support of a project that has a lot of potential if it's done right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and for continuing the dialogue. We hear you loud and clear, Francisco.
The next speaker is David, last name starts with an S, Salzgut, and then Les Light and Robert Copeland. Is David here? I don't see David. So Les Light and then Robert Copeland.
Gold, like, gold, two or three silver.
Two of these, I mean, so it's a distinction.
It is.
Congratulations, William.
We have somebody that wants to take a picture.
Always said gold is better than silver.
True.
Okay, terrific. Madam Clerk, is there anything on the consent calendar that needs to be noted or changed?
Nothing to be noted. I do have four speakers on item number one on consent.
Okay, are there any members that want to pull off any of the consent items? If not, why don't we take a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Let's hear from the four members of the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first is Francisco Garcia. Daniel Sarskow. I can't read the last name. And then Les Light.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Francisco Garcia. I've worked in the catering department at Golden One Center since it opened in 2016. Before that, I also worked at Arco Arena for 13 years. I'm a proud member of Unite Here Local 49 and E-Board Member for LACLA, Labor Council for Latin American Advancement. I've spoken before about the Sacramento Republic project and our belief that if it's done correctly, it can be a great project for Sacramento. It can bring good jobs to people who really need it and build up the community. My union is eager to continue dialogue with the Sacramento Republic to ensure this project is a win for everyone. We hope that soon we can come out in full support of a project that has a lot of potential if it's done right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and for continuing the dialogue. We hear you loud and clear, Francisco.
The next speaker is David. Last name starts with an S. Salzkach. And then Les Light and Robert Copeland. Is David here? I don't see David. So, Les Light and then Robert Copeland.
As regards item one, in all respect to our brothers from LACLA, I'm with the Sacramento Tenancy Union. I, on the other hand, am here to urge the city government to end and abandon all further involvement in the construction and development of another sports stadium. We are told that costs will mostly be covered by private investors, but this bait and switch is so old and repeated so many times in so many places, there is no excuse for the people of the city to fall for this again. Anyone who doesn't see what's going to happen again must be asleep. The city will end up footing the bill for $400 million? We can only assume this will serve to politically ingratiate those select few who will directly benefit from this and will return the favor with funds for election campaigns and self-promotional projects. This misappropriation of hundreds of millions of dollars for a stadium and dubious fees may advance your personal careers, but the people of Sacramento shall be shamefully ill-served by this. If your investors have $400 million, why not ask them to pay for our last stadium? Or help Sacramento soccer fans with some affordable housing they won't be evicted from and a relief for those already forced onto the street. You're grown-up adults. You ought to know the difference between what you merely want and what your city desperately needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Copeland. Calling Mr. Copeland is Daniel Salzkach from Unite Here.
I'm gonna weave my right to speak. I think Frank said everything I had to say.
Wonderful, thank you.
Robert?
If we have private investors, then why are the issues going to fund $1.8 million on a soccer stadium? I mean, private investors should fund all the soccer stadium, not most of it, not part of it, all of it. And I'd rather see you scrap the soccer stadium, try to get the Monarchs back, or an AHL team. That's a minor league for a National Hockey League, by the way. Like, maybe CL's gonna have expansion hockey team for NHL. We can get a minor league and AHL team. And we don't need a soccer stadium. We need more affordable housing. With all respect for Unite Here, this is a bad idea. I mean, we need more housing than a soccer stadium.
I have no more speakers.
All right, thank you very much. We do have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. That passes unanimously. Let's now move to the public hearings. We've got items 53... Well, let's take them in order. Item 53. Who is... Thank you.
Evening, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. Eric Frederick with the Finance Department. This item before you is the annual public hearing for the Citywide Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District.
I'd like to waive the presentation, open and close the public hearing, and approve the item.
Been moved and seconded. Do we have any public testimony on this item? Anything else to note, sir? I just want to say it would have been a great presentation.
I made it even shorter this year. Yes, I did.
Very good. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. That passes nine to nothing. Let's go to item 54.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the City Council. My name is Adam Randolph, and I am a senior engineer with the Engineering Services Division of the Department of Public Works. The purpose of this council item is to conduct a public hearing on a resolution of necessity authorizing the city attorney's office to acquire property rights required for the DW Babcock School Access Improvements Project by eminent domain. This council action does not establish just compensation, nor does it affect continued negotiations between city staff and the property owner. The project is in Council District 2 in the Swanston Estates neighborhood. The city must acquire easements from the property at 1841 El Camino Avenue, located on the northwest corner of the intersection of El Camino and Albatross Way. The project proposes to construct pedestrian safety improvements near the DW Babcock Elementary School, which include the installation of a new traffic signal at the intersection of El Camino and Albatross, and construction of sidewalk, curb, gutter, pedestrian ramps, and pedestrian crossings along El Camino Avenue, Albatross Way, Woolley Way, and Cormorant Way. To install the new traffic signal at El Camino and Albatross, the city must acquire a 900-square-foot roadway easement and a 500-square-foot construction easement over a portion of the parking lot outside of the commercial business at 1841 El Camino Avenue.
Tried negotiations. Yes, sir. Counselor.
I've been briefed by staff. I'm very comfortable with what's taking place. I'd like to open and close the public hearing and move the item, but I also want to say that this is, in my view, very necessary to help improve safety for young people walking, riding their bikes to schools in that immediate area. And there's a dispute with property owners and such, which should not impact that. And this will provide just compensation for whatever the taking ends up being, which is probably going to be very minimal. But I feel very comfortable with this. So, I'd like to move the item, please.
Moved and seconded. Do we have public testimony on this item?
We do not.
We do not. Is there anything else that needs to be noted for the record? No? All right, thank you for the presentation and hard work. All in favor, then, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. That resolution passes again unanimously. We now move to item 55, which is the facility fee for events at the Memorial Auditorium. There is something that needs to be... Matt, something that needs to be read into the record? Go ahead, sir.
I want to speak again.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, madam clerk, city manager. My name is Matthew Boyer. I'm the general manager of the Convention Center complex, which includes the theater and the Memorial Auditorium. I'm here this evening to seek your approval on a $3 facility fee for all ticketed events taking place at the Memorial Auditorium effective July 1 of 2019. This type of fee is very common in the entertainment industry. In fact, the following venues in the Sacramento area have such a fee. Wells Fargo Pavilion, $5. Harris Center for the Performing Arts in Folsom, $4. The Golden One Center fee varies. The average is $3.56, and the Crest Theater is at $2. The Memorial Auditorium recently completed a $16.1 million renovation for temporary and permanent improvements. The focus was improving the facility's functional and technical capacity to host the performing arts events while the Community Center Theater undergoes its renovation, which is slated to be completed in September of 2020. The renovations not only enhance the patron experience, but also improves the auditorium's capabilities in the long run. While there were many improvements made to the Memorial Auditorium during the renovation, the 92-year-old historic building still has work to be done. The proposed $3 facility fee collected will strictly pay for the following projects: Restore and repair the main floor. Restore and repair the exterior main plaza and the concrete steps. Repair the broken grates over the organ chamber. Paint the organ chamber columns. Paint the Gene Runyon Little Theater. Purchase and install new screens and a sound system for the Gene Runyon Little Theater. Repair the chimes. Repair and replace the roof. Install a separate HVAC system for the box office. Replace the current urinals with waterless units to be more efficient. Replace current toilets with low-flow bowls to conserve water. Replace restroom privacy partitions. Purchase electronic wrenches to raise and lower the chandeliers above the main floor when the light bulbs need to be replaced. Two projects were omitted from the record, and I would like to add them to this list. The first is to upgrade the current stage lighting in the Gene Runyon Little Theater with a more efficient system. And secondly, to install a video projector in the Gene Runyon Little Theater. City staff will evaluate these projects at the start of the fiscal year to determine which project will be completed based on the scope of work and the cost. With your approval of this fee, we will be able to continue to provide a well-maintained, historic, and cost-effective venue while increasing its uses as the premier venue in the Sacramento region. This concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I open and close the public hearing, thank the staff, and move the item?
My object...
Okay. Matt, thanks for all the good work you've done. Memorial is a gem. Getting back in after the $16 million, but noticing the work we still need to do, this is totally appropriate, and I appreciate it.
The facility looks beautiful on the inside.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your support.
Looks, you know... Voices are booming in the auditorium. Okay, thank you. Is there public testimony on this? Okay, this has been moved and seconded.
Thank you.
The facility's fee. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. That's unanimous as well. We move to item 56. Is our Matt, if you're here, Mr. Ruiak? Go ahead.
Mayor?
Yeah?
We also went through this at Longledge. I think it's totally appropriate. I'm happy to move the item.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there anything else? Mr. Ruiak's been preparing all day for this moment, all year. Is there anything, Matt, seriously, that you want to add for the record?
Take it to court, Matt. That's a new record. I didn't mention a word. I didn't say a word. I didn't introduce myself, so I set the record.
That's 25 words, by the way. Okay, there you go. All right. Moved and seconded. No public testimony. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Mr. Ruiak. She takes a lot of work to get to this point. We appreciate it. Okay. Item 57.
Tia, can you help me get the PowerPoint? Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council. Here to present on the I Street Bridge Replacement Project. Ask for the approvals of the environmental document, the preliminary plans, authorization to submit a USDOT build grant, and also support for the deck conversion project. I'll make this quick. Good one. So, the I Street Bridge was constructed in 1911, opened in 1912, serves approximately 40 trains a day, 30 commuter trains, 10 heavy rail freight trains, carries around 8,000 to 10,000 vehicles today across its upper deck. I was surprised to learn that this project, bridge, was preceded by other projects. This is the wagon wheel bridge that was constructed in the 1850s. It was the first swivel bridge at this location, constructed of timber. When the city sold the crossing to the railroad, the first combination bridge was built in this location, which had the upper deck for other modes and the train on the bottom. This is the project before you today. It's the I Street Bridge Replacement Project. We are not demolishing the existing I Street Bridge. We're going to construct a new motor vehicle crossing, along with other modes, that would connect Rail Yards Boulevard to C Street, and we'll be demolishing the viaducts that lead up to the existing I Street Bridge. This graphic shows the existing cross-section to the I Street Bridge and the proposed cross-section. So, in working with the community and also our primary sponsors with USDOT and also Caltrans, this is the proposed cross-section. Includes 12-foot sidewalks, buffered bike lanes. It is a low-profile bridge. It'll be a lift structure. Some of the constraints that went into the type selection for the structure include continuing to be able to provide mariner traffic, so that it is US navigable waters. And so, in working with the US Coast Guard and identifying the constraints to existing mariners and in their outreach to along the river, these were some of the constraints that are identified. The confluence, the SAC intake facility, the bend in the river, and the ability to navigate through the center pier of the existing bridge. Dutra, this is the design vessel. The horizontal width will be designed for is for barge and tugboat and crane operation. This is how they would typically respond for levee maintenance. And this is an image from 2018 January responding to an emergency levee repair. This is on the Taylor Island down near the confluence of the Sacramento River and the San Joaquin River. So, we want to make sure the new bridge can accommodate this vessel. In 2016, we completed the bridge type selection report. Right now, and upon approval of the environmental document, we will continue the architectural selection of the bridge. This gained a lot of notoriety in 2018 with some publications at the SACB editorial board, SAC Town Magazine. So, we did an international design competition to hire an architect. We had a press conference in October of 2018 to announce we'd be working with TY Lin. We had our first public engagement meeting on March 28, where the architect walked us through nine different concepts. We'll be having a follow-up meeting in July. These were some of the concepts that were part of the virtual workshop and also at the workshop on March 28. So, here it is. It's the approval of the environmental document. So, it's a major step forward toward the construction of a new bridge across the Sacramento River. With the construction of the new bridge, it gives us opportunity to look at the deck conversion, and West Sacramento has been leading the study to look at what the opportunities are for the deck conversion of the existing structure. This picture was taken on March 23. We had an outreach event hosted by West Sacramento that closed the upper deck of the I Street Bridge to automobile traffic and allowed for a lantern festival to take place. So, this was a feasibility study that West SAC recently completed that looked at how multi-shared uses could access the upper deck in the event of it being repurposed. These are just concept renderings from the feasibility study. The resolution is asking for authorization to continue the partnership with West Sacramento to look at identifying preliminary engineering funds where concepts will be further refined and identified. So, with that, just give it to you and look forward to your approvals on these items, and I would happily answer any questions. And I'm here with the consultant team and also representatives from West Sacramento.
Okay, we do have... Do we have any public testimony on this?
We do not.
We do not. So, we do have councilmembers. This is an important item here. They're all important, but... Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jesse, Jason, our West SAC colleagues. First of all, this is a huge project, and we're here actually because Jerry Way submitted a grant for bridge replacement without council permission. And we got $79 million in preliminary funds. And then we said, oh, great, we approve your grant. But Congresswoman Metzou, he's done a phenomenal job advocating for us on this project with the federal government. The one thing, Jesse, and, you know, I continue to think that the waterfront is so important. The new bridge is going to be spectacular. But one of the things that's been a precept for me, because this runs through my district on the east side of the river, is to take down as many of the ramps as possible, which block access to the river. And what I can't tell from your diagram here versus others, how much of the ramps are coming down? Because it shows in red that a bunch are, but then I saw in a different rendering what looked like a fairly substantial portion behind the railroad museum staying.
Yeah, as part of the deck conversion study, they looked at the portions that crossed the UP tracks and if that could be strengthened as part of the deck conversion project, and then that's where the access would be provided from. But it... Yeah. So...
So, is this diagram that's showing the red the accurate one, or is the one like the rendering you showed of the other pieces accurate, where we have a substantial amount of concrete hanging off?
Yeah, we will have the environmental clearance to demolish all the viaduct, but West SAC is interested in their feasibility study, looking at repurposing the portion that crosses UP here.
I would just say, for my purposes, we still have to study this, that removing obstructions between the river and the city is very important. San Francisco, the Embarcadero was freed from some of these things because of an earthquake. Obviously, we don't want an earthquake. But this is a chance to open up those views, to open up this area for opportunity for the public to enjoy it. As much as the upper bridge deck is interesting, I think we still have to press forward with as minimal approach to engaging the bridge deck as possible. And for me, the priority is the new bridge. So, I just... I'm prepared to support this tonight, but I would add direction to the motion that we limit the... motion that we limit the remaining bridge structures to the extent feasible and that any proposal that would retain them beyond a minimal point come back to us at a later date.
Okay.
Obviously, the West Sacramento City has done a good job with feasibility, and they've done their feasibility, but we have not evaluated that here, and I don't want to just adopt that analysis without further discussion.
Okay.
So that's.
Does that, can I just, for clarity purposes, does that delay the decision-making around the bridge?
Well, I think we would add to the resolution for the deck conversion project that we answer the question that you just posed, that we look at.
Part of the analysis.
Yeah, as part of the analysis.
Answer the questions.
As part of the analysis moving forward for the deck conversion, we answer.
Okay. Mayor, I just wanted to understand.
But Mayor, just to your point, none of the things adopted in the EIR applying for the grant, any of those things, none of them would be impacted, just the future project that we're still working on related to the upper bridge deck?
Right. And I know that people have different opinions about whether or not that should be a pedestrian, a pedestrian crossing, et cetera, and you've expressed your point of view on that. I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything here that forecloses or prejudices any outcome there. Is that, is that right?
Except to the extent that my motion requires us to remove as much of the deck as possible of the ramps. And I feel very strongly that we need to come back with further analysis. We haven't done.
I'm fine with further analysis, as long as we're not, as long as we're not making, as long as we're not affecting the decision one way or another. You've.
I do think that it is affecting it, but it is not making the decision.
Okay. I mean, I guess I just should say, for the record, and, you know, completely acknowledging and respecting council member Hanson's point of view on this, great colleague, all this. The idea of a pedestrian bridge on the top is actually exciting to me. And to the degree, that may need to be balanced with some of the factors that council member Hanson is raising here about access to the river, and I understand, respect that, and I'm all for a complete analysis. I just want to make sure that we're.
Mayor, this wouldn't affect the ability to use the top deck for pedestrians.
Okay.
Yeah. But they wanted to retain a lot of the concrete and a lot of the other stuff. If you look at the rendering that Jesse just showed, I think that's the wrong approach for maintaining access and engaging the river. So that's just my perspective.
Okay, for further, for further discussion and debate. Okay. Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually tend to agree with council member Hanson's comments. It certainly is a question worth asking and answering. There are differing views about the design of the approach. Using the deck for pedestrian, I think, is a really good use. So I agree with the mayor, and I think it's fair to take a good, hard look at the design of the entry to the bridge, but also agree that the new I Street Bridge is really the focus here. And so I'm happy to second the motion.
Councilman engineer.
I'll do it myself. Too late. So I just want to be clear on this as well, because I've had some conversations about this, and I think the opportunity to do some type of high line on the top deck is exciting. And this is one of many things that need to connect us to our neighbors across the river. So I want to be clear for myself too of what we will see as you come back, because my hope would be that if you, that there will be options that we can look at, that the feasibility study will look at.
Yeah.
If you want to remove more concrete, this is what happens, and the cost and benefit of it, if you want to do less, this is the cost and benefit of it. So as long as we have that, I'm perfectly fine moving ahead with this way.
Okay.
And this is a major piece for the entire city, is how we connect ourselves across the river.
That?
Yeah.
We're good.
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Hanson.
I was just going to say, I think the new bridge, if you see some of the renderings that are coming in the public meetings, that's going to be what's so exciting. It's truly going to be a remarkable structure, thanks to the work of our staff and the community process. And so I think as much as we can get excited about a high line, this new bridge, like the Tower Bridge, will be an iconic addition to Sacramento's landscape.
And I have no doubt about that. I know a lot of our planning staff was just in Portland. We have multiple ways there across the river, and that's my hope, is that we can do the same thing. So it'll be great. I'm looking forward to the new bridge.
Excellent. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain, that passes unanimously. We now move to the final agenda is item of the evening, and that is item 58 regarding the water agreement, the Natomas Unified School District. You Seth, if you want to present it, then I know I'm going to turn it over to council member Ashby, or if you want to go first. What would you prefer?
Let me just, I, thank you, Mayor, first of all. And Bill, did you have anything you needed to say on the record?
No.
Okay. So Mindy, can you just tell me how many speakers you have signed up there?
I have 23 speakers, all in favor.
Okay. So we have about 23, or somewhere between 23 and 26 of you signed up to speak, but you are all in favor. So what I am going to ask instead is for Superintendent Chris Evans, Executive Director of NP3 Tom Rutten, and Paso Verde Principal Tanya Gerald to come down to the stand together. And if you guys would just speak on behalf of the district and each of your campuses, and then maybe while they're doing that, if the rest of you want to stand for a moment in sign of support for this item, anybody who's here in support of this item, you want to stand up for a quick second so my colleagues can see your support? That's great. Thank you. Superintendent, and also I would like to acknowledge that trustee Kaplan is here too, also in support. Chris, if you want to go ahead?
Yes, our intent is to keep this short for you tonight. Mayor Steinberg, council members, Natomas Unified and the city of Sacramento has a history of being good partners. Tonight's item is just another example of our positive working relationship. I want to thank the city staff and our NUSD staff, who've been working on this agreement for months. Paso Verde School is already moving forward and is being built. It is immediately adjacent to the Westlake Community, serving students and families from the city of Sacramento. Dirt has been moved, grading is progressing, DSA plans approved, and 800-plus students will be moving into a beautiful new facility in the winter or spring of 2020, 2021 school year. For students and families, this is a watershed moment, pun absolutely intended. It'll mean a city of Sacramento community, long-promised a neighborhood school, will have one for kinders through eighth graders. You've had a long few weeks, and you deserve your upcoming recess. So if we can have your support, we respectfully do not want to take away from your valuable time and have all of our supporters speak. So I'm standing here to represent all of them, to thank them for coming on behalf. This is about one-tenth of the crowd that filled our boardroom when we considered placing this school at this site. I wanted to, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, our Natomas Unified Community, our students and myself, ask you to take action to approve this agreement with the Natomas Unified, that the Natomas Unified staff and the city staff have created together with our thanks.
Yeah, go ahead if you guys want to add to that.
Good evening. I just, I'm Tom Rutten, I'm the Executive Director for NP3 Schools. You wonder why we have an interest in this. Currently, the Paso Verde campus is located on the campus that we have for our six-through-12 operation, while our elementary school is located in a commercial building. It currently serves 300 students in Natomas, and we currently have a waiting list of over 453. Without this move, without this project going forward, those are 453 families we can't serve. I really want to thank you for your consideration in this, the work the people have put in. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Ashby for all the work she did in making sure that the bond passed that allowed us to build the school that'll give us updated campuses throughout. So I appreciate your consideration and thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Councilmember Ashby. I'm Tanya Gerald, the founding principal of Paso Verde School, and as somebody who deeply appreciates summer recess, I'm just here to say thank you for your support.
All right. Thank you. Those are the leaders of this movement in Natomas, and then a little bit of a list here from me. This item, this is, you, some of you may have heard about it because their site is not in the city, but the county doesn't have water on this site, and I see council member Harris chimed up. I'm going to let him speak to that piece a little bit because he is our resident water expert. But we are really, the question before us is basically, do they have to spend $4 million to build a well, or do we give them the water that's out there? And we've had to hire outside counsel, as have they. Our outside counsel is here today. Alicia Guerrero, I think, is here.
Yeah.
Is here. And then I wanted to thank some city staff who've worked on this for well over a year to get it to this point. We tried really hard to address this in another way, but we've ended up here, and I'm very proud of the city for stepping in where they didn't need to, but in the best interest of students and families in Natomas. So on my team, Karina Talamontes and Deb Wergler helped a lot. And then in the city, Cheryl Hodge, Bill Busey, Tom Pace, Fran Holbacher, Michael Voss, Jeff, Heron, and Howard Chan, Hector Barone, and Susanna Alcala Wood, all worked on this for well over a year to make sure that we could do this, that we would do it correctly, that we wouldn't jeopardize anything else. There is no subsidy to this deal. They are paying the, they didn't request one, by the way. They're paying the same wholesale price that anyone would pay when they receive our water. It is savings enough for them to not have to build a well. This is not about whether the school goes forward or not. The school is going forward. This is whether or not they have water that is accessible from us versus spending a fortune on it. So I asked my colleagues to support this. I would like to move the item, thank all the staff involved, and then hear from my colleagues who chimed up.
Very good. So is, is the rest of the public testimony waived?
Yeah, I think they're good. Yep.
Are we good? Okay. Thank you, council member Ashby. And thank you for all the speakers for being here tonight and for appreciating our upcoming recess. We appreciate it. Let me turn it over to councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've looked at this from strictly a water point of view, and it makes a lot of sense for the city of Sacramento to be the water purveyor for this project. It really doesn't make sense to force the school to dig well and pump water from our groundwater basin, which is really kind of at odds with the idea of the groundwater bank project that we're trying to build. So I'm definitely in support, and I'm happy to second your motion.
Thank you, council member.
Moved and seconded. Councilmember Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to be brief. As many of you know, I represent River Oaks, part of Natomas, and there's 10,000 people up there. But I would tell you that this school, wherever it is, is lucky to have the parents it has. Because all of you who emailed and wrote, well, I was never in doubt about what was going to happen tonight. The passion of Paso Verde is on display, the Puma power, if you will. And I just, I think you as parents need to know how appreciated that is, because a lot of times we're working with various schools, and we don't necessarily see this kind of organizing, but it really does help. It shows that you care, that you're engaged, and there is no doubt what we were going to do, just for the record.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. It's a fantastic school and a fantastic community that I am honored to represent. They have fought hard, and not just Paso Verde, although definitely they have been leaders, but they've had support from the whole district and all the parents, North and South Natomas, you know, Two Rivers. Everybody understands, this is the fastest-growing school district in the Six County region. Without building Paso Verde their own home, they can't grow, and neither can anyone around them. So this is critically important for the families of Sacramento, and I ask for the vote, Mayor.
Great, great work, council member. Great work, everybody. It's good, good stuff. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain. That doesn't get any better than that. That is the formal part of our agenda, but we now have public testimony for items not on the agenda.
Council comments first.
We have council comments first, okay? Are there members of the council that want to announce events or make other comments? Councilman Schneer.
Wait till they're.
Why don't we just pause for just a quick moment?
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually for all of my colleagues at the dais, as well as Laney, if you could help as well. So we, a bit ago, made a change in the ordinance around our youth commission, making it part of the charter. And as a result, we also wiped out all the current youth commissioners. So I just want to ask everyone, if you could take a look, you need to either reappoint or appoint new, because we have no youth commissioners at this point. And I would ask the city manager's office to also provide support to all of us so that we can move this forward. Not in the city charter, but the change we made wiped everyone out, and our attorney can. The YPC changed. Huh? Yeah, and the clerk's office can help to support as well, but we have no youth commissioners. We just need to do it again. Well, we have no youth commissioners, so I would hope within the next month to two months, they have no meetings set because they have no.
Calendar.
August would be great. Certainly, if we can get it as they're going back to school. And for the mayor too, you have a number of appointments. Yeah. Yeah, same thing. We haven't changed any of that.
Okay, we'll get on that. Everybody, members, if that's a request from council member Schneer, to all get on that, that would be appreciated. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, I just have a couple of. First is an AB 1234 report, Mindy. I recently went to Washington DC on behalf of the Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency and lobbied for work plan funding for the Natomas Basin Projects and also the Yolo Bypass Cash Slough Partnership Pilot Study. So that's that report. The second thing I wanted to mention is this, that the Volunteers of America, who were the providers for our railroad avenue shelter and will very likely be the providers for Capitol Park project, run the Mather Community Campus, which is the most robust homeless program in the Six County region. They have tremendous wraparound services and a success rate well over 80% in terms of getting people into housing as well as employment. They have a funding shortfall, which means that there are beds that the city could avail themselves of. You know, they're partially funded by the county of Sacramento, but there is an opportunity here for the city and the county to collaborate in joint funding for the Mather Community Campus project. So my ask of staff is this, that the VOA will be giving a proposal to the city for additional funding for the Mather Community Campus, and I see it as a great opportunity for us because there could be as many as 70 beds available to the city of Sacramento in a short timeframe with wraparound services and a great success rate. So it looks like a good investment. We'll have to work with the county to affect this, but I just would like our staff, the city manager, Emily Halcon, to receive the proposal from VOA for us to assess and come back with the possibility to decide on how we want to move forward.
Councilmember Harris, thank you for raising that. I know it's not agendized tonight. I just want to say that I totally agree with you. We need to work with the VOA and with our county partners to find a way to save and take advantage of these 70 beds. And I commit to working with you and the county and the VOA to try our very best to accomplish that. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings, I know that I, go ahead.
I got you.
You go.
Thank you, Mayor. Point of personal privilege, I've got five grandchildren who are at home watching us on television, and they are going crazy, because I'm about to call out their names, of Leanni and Lila and Brinkley and Bailey and Richard Terrell Jennings IV, and Bryson Jr. couldn't be there. But they're going crazy right now, just because they can hear me on television talking to them. So for those who have grandchildren.
Everybody.
You know why I had to take this moment. All right. So we wave at them. So now, on to the business of the district. This Saturday, if you live in the Pocket Green Haven area, you're invited to a community barbecue. It's going to take place Saturday, the 29th, from 11:00 to 2:00 PM at the Garcha Bend Park. There'll be a bounce house, there will be food, and a lot of activities for the kids. So once again. So once again, that's this Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00 at Goshabin Park. And then on the July 4th, we're gonna have Unity in the Community, a parade and festival. We're gonna march down Windbridge, go up to Goshabin Park. We've got bounce house extravaganza. So if you have young kids, we have 10 bounce houses, and a rock climbing wall, face painting, a dog contest, much, much more. So come on out for a great time on July the 4th. And then finally, District 7, every July, does Jazz in July. So on July the 5th, we have Vivian Lee Quartet at Marriott Park. On the 12th of July, we have the Jose Hernandez Group at Seymour Park. Jose Hernandez will come back on the 19th of July at the Goshabin Park. And then we'll conclude at the very end on the 26th of July with Doug Martin, a guitarist at the Willie Castan Park in the Valley High area. So July promises to be a lot of fun. We hope you'll join us, come on out and have a great time in the Sacramento community. Thank you.
Great. Look forward to the July 4th events. Be there. Councilman Gedda.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to invite the community out to Friday at Tahoe Park. We are having our annual, or monthly, food truck event. And if you want to stick around a little later, at 7:00 at the College, the College Green Neighborhood Association is having their annual national night out event that they usually hold right before 4th of July. And want to encourage folks to be out there. I do want to thank all our city staff that go out there, Fire Department, Police Department, who are there to connect with the community. And also, this Thursday, in partnership with Senator Pan, Senator Pan's taking on initiative to get a million free meals out to the community. So for those who are looking for a free meal, there are a lot of communities, a lot of families who during, when school is out, don't have a place for their kids to get a free meal. We're also offering free pool access for those who participate in the free meals, and we're gonna do free open pool and meal day this Thursday, June 27th, from noon to 2:00 at the George Simp Community Center. I do want to thank Dr. Pan's efforts on that. We're working with the Library Foundation and the library also on meals at our libraries as well. With that, I want to concur with the request by Councilmember Harris about the Mather Community Campus, and want to support that effort. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Rick, I think your grandkids got bored to death and went to sleep. This Saturday, June 29th, from 11:00 to 1:00, Sigma Gamma Rho sorority, Eta Alpha Sigma alumni will host their annual Safe Summer Swim Event. That's gonna be at the Pennel Center Pool. This is a free water safety and education event. Snacks will be provided, and there will be raffle prizes. Open swim will begin immediately at 11:00. You can register by completing a form at the Pennel Center or by calling 916-316-2633. That's open swim, free to the community, snacks will be provided, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Pennel Center. Fill out the form at the center or call 916-316-2633. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have an AB 1234 report. Last Wednesday, I traveled down to the League of Cities Conference in Orange County and gave a presentation on communication between council members and city managers. And in the middle of my presentation, Howard called me, almost on cue. But it was a great presentation, and I think it was very useful to the attendees. But that's my AB 1234 report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a second to, first of all, tell my colleagues in the city and the police department how impressed I have been with each of you over the last week. That has been so difficult, and we all have all these events and things. And I've watched each of you handle those events. For example, Jeff Harris and I, and I know Jeff took a moment of silence at his pops in the event, and we did it, too, at our events this weekend. And I know in the days and weeks to come, we, as council members, and I'm sure in the mayor's, with the mayor's lead, will find more ways to honor Officer Tara O'Sullivan, will think of things. I know I've already heard Alan's got some ideas, and I'm sure others do, too. We'll all find ways to do things that are important and significant. But just for me, I've had a remarkable relationship with the police department since before I was ever even a council member. And this has been hard to watch, hard to watch them suffer so much, hard to watch them hurt, and yet I am extremely proud of them for the way they have behaved, start to finish, here, how they've handled the whole situation, and really stuck together and allowed the community to mourn alongside them and support them. For people out there who would like to have an opportunity to also honor this hero and have missed some of the opportunities thus far, there is another candlelight vigil, this one hosted by the Police Officers Association tomorrow night in Councilmember Warren's district over at the memorial, the Sheriff and Police Fallen Officer Memorial. Obviously, it's at dusk, so 8:00, if folks want to come to that. But just for me, I want to thank our police department for everything you have done to be such a class act department over the last week in the face of just an extremely difficult time. You make us proud, and I am grateful to serve in a city that has the finest officers we could ever ask for.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris. Excuse me, inappropriate to shout out. If you shout out again, I'm gonna ask you to leave. Time and a place for everything.
Mayor, I...
And this isn't the time and the place. Sorry. Councilmember Harris.
You know, I appreciate everything that Coach M. Ashby said about our police department. They've acted with tremendous aplomb and grace in a really difficult time. I always like to say that when we were doing pops in the park and we took a moment of silence for Tara, it was very well received. I think the city as a whole mourns the loss of a young woman who gave her life to protect us, which is exactly what she was doing. So very important. I also just wanted to thank my incredible staff for our 28th year of Pops in the Park. It was a great series, and Jen West, David Gonzalez, and Jocelyn Navarro deserve a lot of kudos for carrying on a long, valued tradition. And the last thing is, on July 4th, in the River Park community, we will have a firecracker parade, as we have for 26 years, starting at 10:00 at Caleb Greenwood School and followed by a festival at Glen Hall Park. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I wanted to just acknowledge the police department as well, and to say that we had a tragic loss, and it was really all of our loss. It was the police department's loss, it was this council's loss, it was all of your loss as well. And it's something we don't wish on anybody or any family, in inclusion to those who may have been shot and killed. In addition, I think it's very important that we recognize that as a city, we have to support each other in order for us to work together. We need a well-funded and functioning police department, but we also need a healthy, happy city that is respectful and also being respected. And so that is my position here. And I want to say that I've, you know, Officer O'Sullivan was really liked by the constituents of District 2. And I happened to be in Southern California with my youngest son. I had a soccer tournament when this incident took place, but I got a lot of calls from the media, but also I got calls from people from my district, people who you may not have traditionally thought would have had allegiances and alliances with the police department. And they were heartbroken by what happened. And so, you know, to have the people reach out to me that did told me what she meant, what she was trying to do, Officer O'Sullivan, and what she was doing, you know, in such a short period of time. And if you look at the pictures, her pictures, all of them were smiles and happy, and the people around her were smiling and happy. And so she is a tremendous loss to all of us. And I've talked to my council colleague, Mr. Harris, about us doing something very special. I want to make sure that it's not in conflict with some of the things that any of the council members, the mayor, might be thinking. So I want to have that discussion with you. But Councilman Harris and I are gonna bring something special to the council in recognition of Officer O'Sullivan. So thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say another word here, if I might. You know, I just reacted to a shout out now from somebody in the audience. I want to explain why. You know, there is a time and a place for everything. And the issues around policing and all of our communities, especially our communities of color, don't go away. But if every person in this city could not take this moment where a young police officer was shot and killed in the line of duty, and at least for a moment, stop and recognize how important the job of a police officer is in our society, and how dangerous this profession is, then you got a lot of soul searching to do yourselves. You can, it doesn't take away from anybody's opinion, including my own opinion, about what needs to change in the police-community relationship. But there is a time and a place, and now is the time to rally around the men and women who protect and serve. They deserve that, they need that. This community is rightfully in mourning, and we need to heal, and we need to find ways to see the humanity in each other. This was a young woman. And she didn't wear the uniform. She was a 26-year-old woman, graduated from Sacramento State University, got a bachelor's degree. She had friends, she had family, and she died in the line of duty. That's all we should be talking about right now. Take the public testimony, please.
I have 31 speakers signed up for matters not on the agenda. The first is great, let me first read my message. This meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website, and is best viewed on Google Chrome or Firefox. Members of the public who wish to address the council, complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. These do need to be turned in prior to the beginning of each item, so we are not taking any more speaker slips. So that everyone has the opportunity to address the council, members are asked to observe the rules of decorum. Council rules and procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers can be found on our website, a copy is at the back of the room, and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect or discourage. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker does have two minutes to address the council. So again, we have 31 speakers. The first is Gregory Glavvenovich, then Kyle Williams, then Margarita Maldonado.
I would like to speak about water quality, fluoride, and the pineal gland. The pineal gland is spelled P-I-N-E-A-L. It's in the center of the brain. Fluoride is causing calcification of the pineal gland. If you go to YouTube video search box and type in cleaning the pineal gland with herbs, you'll find out about watercress, bananas, and other things. Let's see, if you go to YouTube search box and type in David Wilcock, and you can find websites also that say, if you clean up your pineal gland, you'll be able to see your next There's some ideas that will grab you.
Our next speaker is Kyle Williams, then Margarita Maldonado.
Thank you for having me. I'd like to talk about minimizing leaf blowing. It's a great time of the year to think about it, by the way, because you'll see out in the streets, people justifying their job and blowing dust at this time of the year. Happens all the time. I've been down here 15 years. It's going on way too long, and if we minimize the use of leaf blowing, we would all be healthier, happier, less allergic, all the above. And it's very easy to solve. And Mr. Mayor, do you remember shaking my hand and saying you were gonna work on minimizing leaf blowing at the market?
Like it was yesterday.
And I called your office...
Even though it was two and a half years ago.
And I've called your office 10 or 15 times, and they've never returned my call?
I don't believe that.
Well, actually, I have notations of every call.
I'm sure you do.
I do.
Go ahead.
Anyway, if you put me in charge of it and give me a staff, I think we can easily minimize leaf blowing, and I think everybody would be happy. Secondly is 5G. I don't know how many people are aware of 5G and it wanting to come to our city, and the health effects of 5G. It's frightening when you look at 5G on the surface, and actually, I'm still studying 5G myself. I think underground 5G might be safe. I don't know, and I don't think you all know yet. So I beg you to learn about 5G before you approve walking around in a microwave. That's how they describe it, if it happens, and we have all these cell towers all over the place. It'd be like walking around in a microwave. And food for thought, five cities west of us have already said no way to 5G. So please, spend some time learning about it. I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Margarita Maldonado. Bruce Boyer.
Well, sure.
So as regards curtailing the use of leaf blowers, I've already asked it to come back to the Law and Legislation Committee. I'm currently researching all the ordinance throughout the state. We have to decide what kind of metric to tie some kind of restriction to. I've spoken to people in the industry as looking for best practices in terms of what is possible within our city. Haven't worked on it, because the budget process has been very time-consuming, but should come back after our council break with some recommendations to law and legislation about a possible partial curtailment of leaf blowers in the city of Sacramento.
Forward to that. Thank you. Bruce Maldonado, nice to see you.
Hi there, Darrell, and council members, and thank you for this opportunity. So I'm Margarita Maldonado with Housing for Sacramento, which is a coalition of housing advocates, community-based organizations, and labor unions. So tonight, we had hoped that we would be able to be here commenting on a new set of renter protections, but justice moves quite slowly in Sacramento. And we really appreciate the efforts that Councilman Hanson has been taking to move this process forward quickly and judiciously. However, we're disappointed that it is taking, once again, too slow with the bureaucratic process that is in place. And every day, we see the affordability crisis. It's gripping half of our city. And so while the other half is basking in the glow of our city's progress and this great dome that we have here in the state of California, there are still another half that are suffering. And we came here tonight to remind you how important the issue is, and it is to the soul of our city. And so recently, we met a woman who's being evicted. She's seven months pregnant, and I want to share with you the message that was left by the property management company.
Hi, this is Bonnie from Vista Group Building, return your call. The notice does not have to give you a reason why, the landlord does not have to give you a reason why. They can just give terminate a tenancy with the proper notice, so there's no set, they don't have to give a reason. So basically, landlord can give, on a month-to-month tenancy, he can give anybody he wants a notice to move, and there's no, he does not have to give you a reason. So I am going on vacation, and I don't want any more fussing or mussing about this. That's the way it is. The landlord has given you a notice, and they do not have to give you a reason. Thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you, Margarita.
Thank you.
Thank you, I think that...
So as you're going off on your vacation, I really just hope you think about these words, that this woman, who's pregnant, seven months pregnant, is enduring.
Our next speaker is Bruce Boyer and Robert Copeland. Our next speaker is Bruce Boyer and Robert Copeland.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Bruce Boyer. I'm a member of SEIU 10-1, and I'm a delegate to the Central Labor Council. I'm here today to speak on behalf of rent control. I'm a union member. I have a decent paying job. I make a decent wage. I still pay over 70% of my monthly income towards rent. So I'm here to ask the city council to take bold solutions to support tenants and to fight against displacement and homelessness by two ways: passing real rent control and capping rent, rent capping no higher than 5%, and passing just cause evictions for all renters from starting in the month they move in. Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Copeland, then Les Light, Jonah Paul. Robert Copeland, Les Light, Jonah Paul, then Nikki Jones.
I want to echo what the previous speaker said. We need a real rent control and just cause evictions. And I asked Mayor Steinberg at a Housing California conference, if he wants to make a deal? No deal. No deal, Mayor Steinberg. We want real rent control and just cause eviction in Sacramento, because people are getting priced out of their place to live, and people are getting evicted for no reason at all, and we got slumlord that Sacramento Tenants Union's been fighting against. I mean, some of these places that landlords have are atrocious. I mean, really? I mean, come on now, let's have real rent control in Sacramento. If we have to take it to the state level, we will. I mean, if we have to vote you out, we will. And my city council member is up for reelection this coming year. Thank you.
Next speaker is Les Light, then Jonah Paul.
I am here for the Sacramento Tenants Union. I'm on the tenant organizing team. Canvassing tenants around town, you get a lot of different opinions about everything, but there's one thing they all seem to agree with. Every tenant I'm talking to says we need real rent control. We need just cause. We need to cap the rent, and we need an independent rent control board to be instituted with this. That's all I have to say on it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jonah Paul, then Nikki Jones, then Mackenzie Wilson, excuse me.
Hi, my name is Jonah Paul. I'm with the Democratic Socialists of America Sacramento Chapter, and I am a renter in District 3. I'm here tonight to urge you once again to pass real rent control in the city of Sacramento. That means we need a cap of no more than 5% and just cause eviction protections for every tenant in the city of Sacramento. We have 44,000 renting voters who signed a petition to get rent control on the ballot. Majority of them live in District 4, and they deserve to have their voices heard. So if you can't do anything for the rent, then you need to put this to the ballot. We need to know now whether it's going to be in March or November, and we need to plan around that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nikki Jones. Wilson. Nikki Jones, Mackenzie Wilson, then Kristin Lopez.
Hey, y'all. Nikki Jones, been a renter in Sacramento for quite some time, been a friend to many renters. Most folks I know rent. A lot of the other folks I know live outside. And something that I'm not sure, I'm not sure how much this council has put it together. I try to come here and put it together for y'all. But the way that your impact on housing policy influences the homelessness issues in Sacramento. So as we see all of this, what I would say y'all have gotten very good at, which is double-talk, speak one side of your mouth when there are cameras or community around, offering real solutions, offering the kind of things we've asked for, and then you go around and you talk out the other side of your mouth to the dealmakers, to the developers, and to the police unions. And we see that over and over again, and so we don't have a lot of trust in y'all to be the stewards of good rent control. We don't have trust in y'all to be the stewards of just cause eviction, of a rent board or real tenant protections. If we had real tenant protections, families wouldn't be afraid of eviction when they're doubled up, when they're letting families stay over. You know, that violates a lot of leases, and a lot of families are put at risk, even though that's how most children in the Sacramento County experience homelessness, is by being doubled up with a friend or family member. So we need to really be thinking outside the box when we're thinking about, how are we going to keep these people in their homes? How are we going to end the displacement that's happening in communities that have lived here for generations? Y'all are happy to remove people from public space over and over again without any pathways to housing. What is to tell us as renting people that there's not solutions that look just like that for us? When the sheriffs come, it's the same sheriffs. When the badges and the guns come to displace and remove people from their homes, from their public spaces, these are the same badges, and it's y'all's policy that makes it possible on both fronts.
Your time is complete.
Y'all need to just take a look, do something different. There's a lot of opportunity.
My next speaker is Mackenzie Wilson, then Kristin Lopez. Mackenzie Wilson, then Kristin Lopez, then Jane Doe.
My name is Mackenzie Wilson. I'm the vice president of the Sacramento Justice League, an organizer for the Sacramento Tenants Union, and a helpful participant in the Sacramento Anti-Police Terror Project Sacramento Chapter. And the list goes on and on, which means that I, in fact, know a lot about what I'm about to talk about. I know a lot about it, not just because ending corrupt systems is my passion, but because I literally do work with our most marginalized communities daily. Today, I'm here to talk about all the things. I'm here to talk about your need to end the criminalization of homelessness. I was just sitting outside, and one of your guards came and asked me if I was new to the area, because there was no falling asleep on public-owned property, i.e. city hall's doorsteps. Later here, he actually came back and told us we absolutely had to move. I'm here to talk about the fact that a woman was raped after the Stockton Boulevard eviction, like the very night after you kicked them out. There was safety in that community, and shelter was happening, but SHRA County and the city wanted them gone because of the weekly business you do with the business districts. Yet you don't provide proper housing and shelter. Every week, I see you giving money away. This week, it's going to major league soccer stadiums, business districts, and law enforcement. What about affordable housing? In the last couple of weeks, you guys have actually authorized a demolition of public houses in you and SHRA's authority. I'm here to talk about renters being in need of proper rent control and just cause eviction, not some crap deal you want to give them because of the interest for your business districts and developer friends. What we know is every $100 increase, for every $100 rent increase, our unhoused population goes up 30%. And that 60% of workers already spend more than half of their income on rent, so that these folks living outside are, in fact, people that were once our neighbors. I remember when you guys actually got in the way of us trying to raise the minimum wage here in Sacramento. I'm here to say that it's apparent that you guys are participating in a corrupt system and that nothing about you should be trusted. I'm here to say that your city sees you, city council, and that you're standing in the way of an inevitable fight that is housing is human right in the name of money and private property, and that pretty much means that you are actively organizing against the betterment of our city, and that I know a bunch of folks who are tired of it. So end your criminalization on homelessness, and the anti-capping ordinances, stay out of the way of renters and their needs for just cause eviction.
Our next speaker is Kristin Lopez and Jane Doe. Kristin Lopez, then Jane Doe.
My name's Kristin Lopez. I'm 37 years old. I've been renting since I was 18. It has financially destroyed my life. I've had to live out of my car on two separate occasions just to be able to afford first and last month's rent. Now I'm canvassing for ACE. I have been canvassing, going door-to-door for rent control for the past two years. I helped get this Sacramento rent control measure on the ballot. Because Prop 10 didn't pass, it's only going to cover these, like, shithole apartments that were built before in, like, 1995. So, like, just pass it. Just pass it. I mean, we're going canvassing this next Monday, okay? We're going door-to-door to these places over on Mac Road that are just, like, deplorable. I'd like you to come with me, Darrell. You're more than welcome to come. Our office is over off of Florin Road, over by the Home Depot. We might have donuts. I can't promise you anything. But seriously, man, you need to come with us. These people are suffering, and they're getting thrown out, and they're just like me. We're not going to be able to afford our own homes, ever. It's never going to happen. We're stuck. Please come. Please come with us at the ACE office. Please. We're going door-to-door. We're talking to these people, man. It's a nightmare.
Next speaker is Jane Doe. Jane Doe is the next speaker, then Liam Smith, then Gina Massey.
I just want to see what agenda item you have me listed for, just for speaking right now. I turned into speaking slips.
You're speaking on matters not on the agenda.
Okay, perfect.
You can only speak once on matters not on the agenda, so that would be for both of your items.
Okay. Good evening, council members. My name is Jane Doe. I'm a canvasser here with the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. As someone from an upper-middle-class household from Southland Park, I've been fortunate enough to not struggle with balancing payments for college, transportation, basic living expenses, and, most importantly, rent. Unfortunately, the majority of folks living in California cities do not have the luxury of so easily paying their tax on living. As a matter of fact, the average wage that Californians must earn to pay for a two-bedroom house at fair-market rent is $26.02. Additionally, within the last several years, the cost of rent has seen, in Sacramento, has seen the largest hikes of any other major Californian city. So this $26.02 figure is likely higher now in 2019 than it was when it was recorded in 2012. Considering that the minimum wage of California is still pinned at $12, it's nothing short of impossible that a Sacramentoan, working on an entry-level job, could afford their housing without working significantly more hours or having ready access to higher-level positions. With all of this in mind, I urge the council to pass a sustainable rent control immediately in order to make sure that folks have access to affordable housing and to raise the minimum wage to at least $30 an hour. Mr. Steinberg and Mr. Hanson, I voted for you in 2016 because you promised to accommodate Sacramento's homeless and housing insecure population. I demand today that you put your money where your mouth is.
Our next speaker is Liam Smith, then Gina Massey.
Hi, my name is Liam Smith. I'm here on behalf of Sacramento DSA, Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment, as well as Sacramento Tenants Union. I work with a lot of housing activists. They're here pretty much, like, you know, every time you have a meeting, telling you the same thing: We need rent control in the city. They're saying it over and over and over again. They got petitions, you know, with signatures that said that they want this as a ballot initiative. I don't know how many more times we need to keep saying this to you, but they will continue to say it over and over and over again. Guys, you need to do your jobs and actually honor that petition and actually honor that ballot measure. We need rent control with a cap below 5%. We need just cause eviction. We need a rent board to oversee rent increases. These are the things we have continuously and repeatedly asked for. I was a government worker that lived in Sacramento for several years. I live in Rancho Cordova now because I was forced out of Sacramento because I could not afford rent. The town where government workers like me work is no longer becoming affordable for people who work and want to live in their government capital. That is obscene. This needs to change, and it needs to change now. Do your jobs.
Next speaker is Fajardo. Gina Massey, Marissa Brambilla, and then Giovanna Fajardo.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Gina Massey, and I'm a 58-year-old senior, and I currently reside in District 6, I believe, for Ridge and Mendocino. I'm here today, nervous. I'm here today asking that the council take bold solutions to support tenants and fight against having no rent control and applying just cause for evictions. I currently am experiencing a 90-day eviction for reporting that my apartment has and been having rats and electrical issues. As of seven days ago, my lights were turned off three different times for reporting these things. On the last event, I went to bed about 8:30 four nights ago, woke up very, very hot, discombobulated. I take some mental meds, so when I woke up, not really realizing that the lights are off, the phone is not there, I'm overheated. Ambulance was called, and basically, I'm just asking that the board have someone accountable for the bad landlords, maintenance being neglected, seniors being displaced for voicing the things that are not right in their living conditions. This is my first time publicly speaking. I hope that you understand what I'm requesting and somehow negotiate, mediate. These things are wrong. Mayor Steinberg, you spoke just recently on soul-searching. Once again, I'm a 58-year-old disabled senior, experiencing physical and mental distress. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marissa Brambilla and Giovanna Fajardo.
Good afternoon. My name is Marissa Brambilla. My family of five, three kids and boyfriend, have been renting Alaposa Apartments since November of 2016. I support rent control and just cause for evictions. We have been served with a 60-day notice to terminate our lease due to management retaliation. The manager's accusing us of false allegations. The manager would constantly be charging us money for apartment repairs. Last time, she tried charging us $100, my boyfriend's car that she claimed was a city violation, always refusing to give us properly legal accommodation. We have had enough and got in contact with the owner, which is refusing to do anything. Let me add that in the almost three years we have been living here, our rent has always been on time, our apartment has always maintained clean, and of course, we have always kept a cordial relationship with our neighbors. We are tired of this, being harassed by management. My kids cannot even go outside and enjoy their summer. Something needs to be done. I'm begging for something to be done. There has to be justice, a just cause, just for evictions. I don't understand how somebody can just come and do a month-to-month and just kick people out, knowing that we have kids, we're being disabled, we're paying a rent. I don't understand how people could go home and sleep and be home with your kids, knowing that. We're in danger of being evicted for no reason, no reason at all. My kids are constantly crying. As a mother, I feel like there's nothing I can do because of this law. So please, I beg you all, to have rent control as well as just cause for evictions. Thank you.
For coming to me.
Giovanna Fajardo and Lazaro Cardenas. Giovanna?
Yeah, just one second. Sorry. Sorry. So Giovanna Fajardo, I am on staff with ACE. I had a ring star here. She came two years ago and shared her story, and she cried about her conditions at some of the apartments in District 8 off of Mac Road, Cedar Ridge, and Stonegate Apartments. After that meeting, we had code enforcement come out-- We are organizing the same apartment complex that we've been talking and the News &amp; Review and on the news for two years. So this is something that you guys need to actually pay attention. I'm glad that you guys are at least listening more now to our tenants as they share their stories. I also have a tenant from another apartment complex that they have rats. They got a 30-day notice because they have rats and mold, and they asked for repairs. And so because we don't have rent control and just cause for all tenants, this is a condition that our families are facing. These are the families that are being displaced. I'm glad that people are excited for new business and startup companies to come to Sacramento and be the next San Francisco or big city. But our low-income families are being displaced at cost of new businesses and new corporations coming in. We need to think about these families that are going to be homeless in the next couple days, in the next weeks, in the next months, because it's just timeline. If you guys don't take the courage to think of these families and these tenants, and, you know, like Star and like several of our tenants that have waited here all night, we're keeping track of who's listening, who's being courageous, and for next year, those seats that are up for reelection, we will make sure that people care about rent control and our tenants. Thank you.
Lazarro Cardenas, then Erica Jaramillo, then Elliot Stevenson.
Good evening. My name is Lazarro Cardenas. I am with the Sacramento Tenants Union, living in District 4. I'm also here to ask for the council and for the city to ensure we can get real rent control and camping rents no higher than 5%. It's very reasonable. And also for the passing of just cause protections for evictions for all tenants. Earlier, we were, you know, we were in a moment of silence around the shooting and death of a law enforcement officer in the city of Sacramento. And I was looking a little more about the situation as the city council meeting went on and found that that officer and other officers were responding to a domestic violence call. It's my understanding that domestic violence calls are very dangerous responses for law enforcement and others to go and attend to. And in this advocacy, in this talking with tenants and working with them in the situations, along with ACE and DSA and other organizations, you know, it's often the case that mothers and children find themselves in domestic violence situations without an out, without a way to get out, because it's either this or the streets and fear and homelessness. And so I think it's really important that we think about the spectrum of violence that can occur in this city, whether it's domestic violence, gun violence, or economic violence. And I think you have the opportunity, the voters of Sacramento have the opportunity to put some healing to different parts of this violence. So please, pass rent control, let it go to the voters, real rent control, real just cause. Thank you.
Erica Jaramillo, then Elliot Stevenson, then Felicia Clark.
Okay, mine's probably, I'm probably going to go fast. I really would just like you to hear this. 26 years ago in 1993, local housing advocates and housing providers weighed in on the city's housing element update. It was during this time that our current mayor was a city council member from 1992 to 1998. Documents submitted contained data and statistics noting that 11,718 housing units in the city of Sacramento were in substandard condition and that the city was losing the battle for habitable housing and safe neighborhoods to absentee and slum landlords. This was 26 years ago. Also noted was the fact that Sacramento metropolitan area has the 19th highest rents of any metro area in the nation, and 46% of the city's households were deemed as low-income, data given by Sacramento Housing Alliance. As stated in the notice of intent to circulate petition of the Sacramento Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Charter Amendment, the city does not regulate the amount of rent a landlord may charge, nor does it establish limitations on the termination of tenancies. There seems to be a historical pattern coupled with repeated dismissals of local housing advocates and providers, as well as renters and voters' requests for tenant protections and more affordable housing units and safe and habitable housing. There have been two different Senate bills, Senate Bill 1253, Steinberg's bill, and Senate Bill 1153, Stern's bill, that have passed to ensure that the issues placed on the ballot in state and local elections are accurate representations of the issues affecting the local and/or state community. It has come to our attention that Senate Bill 681, also authored by Stern, is in the Second House right now, and this bill has the potential to be leveraged by you, our city council, to remove the charter amendment from the ballot. Let me remind you all that all political power, let me remind you all that the California Constitution provides that all political power is inherent in the people and that the initiative is the power of the electors to propose statute and amendments. Do not undermine the voters that signed off on the charter amendment and also voted you into office, because we will vote you out.
Thank you for your comment.
We want just-cause eviction, rent caps at 5%, not including CPI, and a rent stabilization board elected by--
Our next speaker is Elliot Stevenson. Elliot Stevenson, then Felicia Clark, then Noah Davidson.
Good evening. I just wanted to relay a story that really struck me recently. I'm a member of the Sacramento Tenants Union, and two folks in crisis reached out to us. I don't expect one story to change the narrative here, but I think it's important to be reminded of the precariousness under which people live in this housing crisis. Two gentlemen were paying rent on an apartment here in Sacramento. The unscrupulous landlord would not give them a receipt for their cash payment, essentially robbed them of their rent money, and then evicted them. Within three weeks, they went from housed to, I just checked in with them yesterday, they're now living on the river, subject to sweeps by police, park rangers, and the sheriff's department. And, I mean, we're talking about less than a month, from roof over your head to on the American River. What we need is rent control and just-cause eviction. We need recourse for people like this. These people were taken advantage of. They should have recourse. But instead, they're sleeping rough, they're begging people for money, they are reaching out to relatives in Los Angeles to hopefully relocate down there. This is not any way to run a city. This is not any way to build a just society, and this is not any way to treat the citizens that you are responsible for governing. So we demand rent control and just-cause eviction, and we demand it right now. No more negotiating. We want this settled and done. Thank you.
Clark? Felicia Clark? Following Felicia is Noah Davidson, then Stacy Maddox.
It's Felicia.
Felicia, thank you.
I'm here again to speak about the issues at the Sacramento County Children's Receiving Home. You've told me to go to the Board of Supervisors, and, son, don't touch that, and I took your advice and did that. The board sat there, just as y'all see here, and they said nothing. I went to that board on April 9th. My daughter was in a car accident on April 10th, 2019, and is now a quadriplegic on life support with full brain function. When I tell you guys that this is your problem, stop ignoring me, because when the kids leave out of the receiving home, they call SACPD. Who governs SACPD? You guys, right? Well, when they cross the street from the receiving home, then SACPD has to call SAC Sheriff, and you guys pass the buck. I've took my issue here, I've took it to the county board, I've went to City Hall, I've went to the California State Legislature and showed him my paperwork, what my CPS worker text messages me. Suzanne Thompson allowed my daughter to do drugs. She sexually exploited my daughter, and when I was ready to prove this by text message, the county just dismissed her to Vacaville. My daughter then got in an accident. So I'm asking this county to take a look. How many children? I have three daughters that went into the system virgins, not on drugs, full students. I got back three children raped, three children addicted on drugs, and one on life support. My seven-year-old son was molested in the system. We're now in civil court, where a civil judge, thank God, is hearing me. But it ain't about money. I could sue y'all right now for $1 million on what you did to my daughter. But it's about the children left in the receiving home. It's about the children that could come and go all hours of the night, and nobody is paying attention to these kids. And I vowed to God, when I got my babies back, I was coming back to you to help save the rest of the children. They need reform, they need policy. I had to get fingerprinted to be a security guard, but they ain't fingerprinted to watch them kids.
Comment, your time is complete. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's just a shame when we care more about protecting groceries that same way than we care about protecting kids out of the receiving home.
Our next speaker is Noah Davidson and Stacy Maddox.
Hello, council. Thank you for hearing my presentation. I'm going to read the introduction to the international appeal to stop 5G on Earth and in space. This appeal has been signed by over 100,000 people, including hundreds of doctors, scientists, and other experts in relevant fields. The introduction states, "We, the undersigned scientists, doctors, environmental organizations, and citizens from 187 countries urgently call for the halt of the deployment of the 5G fifth-generation wireless network, including 5G from space satellites. 5G will massively increase exposure to radio frequency radiation on top of the 2G, 3G, and 4G networks for telecommunications already in place. RF radiation has been proven harmful for humans and the environment. The deployment of 5G constitutes an experiment on humanity and the environment that is defined as a crime under international law. Obviously, there is a tremendous global concern about the safety of 5G, and we are on the very front lines of this experiment. I have a group of people here with me today that are also concerned about 5G in their neighborhoods next to their homes. We were not informed about the installation of these antennas or the safety risks. These antennas are being installed without our permission, without any warning at all. Many of us do not want to be guinea pigs in this experiment, but we apparently have no say in the matter. How can the city possibly justify exposing us to this risk against our will?" Would anyone like to respond?
We take your public comment, we listen. I'm going to direct the city manager and the city attorney to please give us a report back on the implementation of 5G and some of the concerns raised by the residents here tonight.
I raised this concern months ago, and supposedly those staff members have already looked into the matter. I'm asking if any of you have done research into this topic and are willing to respond about the safety--
No, it's not the appropriate venue. You give the comment, and we take it in and listen, but this is not agendized for the public, and this cannot be debated by the city council. Thank you for your comments.
But you're not willing to respond. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stacy Maddox, then Abigail McMahon.
Hi. To follow up, I've been following some regular posts on our local next door by my neighbor, Noah. I'm not usually excitable, and I usually tend to dismiss a lot of this information overload, and there's very few facts going around. And so, but I dug into this one because I'm curious, and it turns out there really is something to this 5G. I encourage you, really encourage you to look into it a bit. We have tons of information. If you want access to it, we can certainly give it to you. These are reputable, sound references. These aren't blog posts, this is nothing nutty. The threat is real. And every week, I become more concerned and convinced of the urgency as I see there are cities and countries, scientific organizations, real scientists, speaking out and demanding that we use caution and get some research before we implement this. We, of course, already have. Necessary for this 5G to perform as needed, it requires many, many more antennas, one for every 11 houses. Every 500 feet, you have to have another antenna. And the radiation is actually much higher than they are even supposed to be. My neighbor used his own hard-earned money, and he hired a radiation engineer who actually measured the amount of radiation coming off of that antenna into his home, and it's outrageous. And it was a shock to everyone concerned that the radiation off that one tower is more than they took out that tower in Ripon for the school. This is even higher, every 11 houses. So I'm willing, actually, to give the city council, the city of Sacramento, kind of a pass on making this deal with Verizon. We want it to be a test city, we wanted that distinction, but we now have more information than we had before. And I encourage you to look into it, and at least, at the very least, turn these towers off, turn the antennas off, disable them until we have all the information. Okay? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Abigail McMahon. I have 10 more speakers tonight, Abigail McMahon, then Hannah McMahon, and Erin McMahon.
Lady, if you want to come right this way so we can see you as well, that would be great. There you go. Welcome to you.
Hello, my name is Abigail McMahon. I am here to talk about the cell antennas in my front yard. I can no longer sleep in my own room because of it. Please move the cell antenna so our lives can go back to normal again. Thank you.
Thank you for coming here tonight to talk to your elected representatives. This is your place. You're always welcome to come here and tell us what you think.
Our next speaker is Hannah McMahon, then Erin McMahon.
To my little girls, I'm a little choked up. In late December, Verizon installed a very powerful cell antenna right outside my daughter's window. About a month after the antenna was installed, both my daughters came down with cold and flu-like symptoms. Another month passed, and my daughters were still ill. We began to wonder if the recently installed antennas could be affecting their health. My brother Noah, who is the scientist in the family, began researching the safety of cell antennas and the radiation that they admit. He found hundreds of studies and experts warning about the dangers of wireless radiation, including immune system suppression, which I believe my daughters have suffered, and cancer, one of the diseases we all fear the most. He's also found that guidelines designed to protect us from this wireless radiation are based on the outdated assumption that the only biological effect caused by wireless radiation is heating. More recent research, particularly research looking at long-term chronic exposure, like we are being subjected to by this antenna, has disproven this outdated assumption. Every single day, we wonder if we are being harmed by Verizon antennas, if our DNA is being changed, if our children will get cancer because of the antenna. It is a terrible way to live, and it has been inflicted upon us against our will. We have put up metal shielding in our home that helps to reduce our exposure, but it is still very high. About a week after we installed the shielding and two months into their illness, my daughter's symptoms went away. To me, this is just more evidence that we have been harmed by Verizon's antenna. We are asking you today to do more to help us get this antenna turned off. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Erin McMahon. As you well know by now, my family owns a home in District 7 at 7597 Pocket Road. I'm coming to speak tonight again about the 5G expansion project in the city of Sacramento, as well as the antenna that was installed in front of my house on Light Pool, SLT-7551. Basically, I'm here tonight because we are about four months in this process, and we have still not gotten any of our answers. We have corresponded with the FCC, we have corresponded with the city of Sacramento, we have corresponded with Verizon, excuse me, US Congresswoman Mitsuhi. A lot of these places are starting to shut down and not even correspond with us anymore, and we're just at a loss. We do not know what to do anymore. We're talking about putting my house, my dream house, that I worked very hard to get, my family's dream house, my wife's dream house, on the market because we do not feel it is safe for our children. I assume that the majority of you, if not all of you, are parents, and I just really would like to know what you would do in my situation. To say this process has been frustrating would be a huge understatement. I've grown up in the city my whole life. I was born-- I was born at Kaiser South in 1980, and I've always been proud of the city of Sacramento and proud of our government. I've lost faith in the last four months with this process. I just don't understand how this is okay. As elected city officials, it is not one of your primary responsibilities to protect the health and well-being of your constituents. We've gotten the runaround from absolutely everyone involved, and still, none of our questions have been answered. Again, the FCC has stopped corresponding with us. Verizon, their corporate attorney reached out to us last week and basically told us good luck.
Your time is up, but I want to take a moment here. You and your wife, I think, have given very important testimony. I want to ask the city manager and the city attorney, in terms of getting answers to our constituents, what can we tell them tonight in terms of a timeline, in terms of whether or not we are, how we are looking into these questions and how we might get back to them?
Mayor, at the request of Councilmember Jennings's office, my office started to do some research and started to work with city staff. I know the city manager has his staff, Maria Maguago, the IT director, looking at this issue. We've been actively, actually, working on this for about a couple of weeks. The city of Sacramento has a limited role to play. We're trying to define exactly what the city could be able to step in. It's true, the FCC, I saw the emails, has pretty much blown this family off, so that's what we're looking at, and that's what I'll be working with my colleague, the city manager, to give some recommendations to the council.
Okay, I appreciate that. So we hear you, and it's our obligation to get back to you. I'm not telling you what the conclusion is going to be. You're making some claims which, about the health impacts of 5G. We owe you at least an explanation and our point of view on the claim that you're making, and we will endeavor to ensure that we get back to you with a transparent answer to some of the questions that you have raised. Okay? Thank you.
Next speaker is Sherri Lynn, then Donna Steele, then Judy Mitchner.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for sitting for such a long time and listening.
Oh, this is short.
Pardon?
This is short.
Is it? Oh, good. Mine's short, too, and obviously, I'm in red, so I'm with everybody who are talking about the 5G. And Mr. Jennings, I just wanted to thank you for sharing your joy about your grandchildren watching the TV and seeing you. You're a grandfather. I'm a grandmother, but I'm a concerned grandmother, and I said I wasn't going to cry. So I'll just read what I have here. Okay, I'm a grandmother. I'm a concerned grandmother. This year, Verizon installed a 5G cell antenna on a light pole outside of my granddaughter's bedroom window. The light pole is the property of the city of Sacramento. One of five cities, apparently, that I've just found out because I'm doing research on 5G myself. I knew nothing about it months ago, but when I went to visit my grandchildren, there was this box right on that pole, and so I got online, I started Googling things, and here I am. And I'm not a public speaker, but I'm here to support and to ask you all, if you can find it within your heart, to somehow, just imagine if it was your granddaughter. Abigail's my granddaughter. Erin's my son. Hannah's my lovely daughter-in-law. Okay? And all I'm asking is, it's all about the wireless radiation. I've done my research, and it appears to me that telecommunication companies who are profit motivated aren't talking or listening to public health research and scientists or physicians who, for several years, have been warning us of the negative health effects associated with exposure to RF radiation and children. Oh, I'm sorry.
Your comments, your two minutes is complete.
No, but thank you. Thank you for coming to City Hall, and we've
Thanks for listening.
We've taken in your message. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Donna. Donna Steele, then Judy Mitchner.
I am Donna Steele. 5G is a form of radiation. Experts in this field have called it an extinction-level event. That's what they called Fukushima, too. My son-in-law was a fisherman. He went out on his big boat, and the last time he went out, there were no fish. That's extinction level. That means everything dies. The FCC has said that there is no testing done on 5G. There's experts in this field, Loren Maurey, Michio Kaku. If you're not familiar with these people, I suggest you get familiar with them because they will, they're world-renowned physicists who will tell you 5G is murder. That's what it is. There was a test done in the Netherlands on this. All the birds died. They just dropped out of the trees. I called Mitsuhi's office. They offered no comment on this. The mayor's office, the person I spoke to in the mayor's office, said that opposition to 5G was junk science. Quote. There are exclusion zones. There are places where 5G is not being installed. One of those places is Miralago. You guys know what Miralago is, don't you? That's Trump's really nice estate in Florida. He doesn't have to have them. Another place is Mill Valley. The whole town just voted not to. I used to live in Mill Valley. Smart, organized people. They're not going to have to have it, apparently. The entire nation of Israel is exempt. They don't have to have 5G, although they pushed it on the rest of the world. These exclusion zones are allowed because they're organized. I can produce a huge bibliography of the tests and the truth and the slow deaths and the brain tumors that are known to be caused by 5G.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Judy Mitchner, then Cindy Lee.
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you for hearing us today. Health is, I'm speaking on 5G also. I have a little bit of red. Didn't have a shirt. Health is by no means the number-one concern here. However, I hope that Erin and Hannah don't have to sell their home, and with that respect, I'm going to talk about property values. The reduction in property values and saleability for homes near cell antennas has been well documented by the Realtor industry. A survey conducted by the National Institute for Science, Law, and Public Policy showed that 94% of respondents are less interested and would pay less for a property located near a cell tower or antenna. Even more distressing, 79% said that under no circumstances would they ever purchase or rent a property within a few blocks of cell towers or antennas. With the vast number of antennas being installed throughout our neighborhood, many of us are going to face these economic repercussions. Some of us that have already had antennas installed near our homes are considering selling our homes to avoid health risks. Will we even be able to do so with a potentially dangerous antenna five feet from our property? These specific issues regarding property values have not been addressed at all by Verizon, the FCC, or the city of Sacramento. How can the city possibly justify taking money directly out of our pockets when we've already told you we do not want these antennas near our homes? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cindy Lee. Next speaker is Cindy Lee, then Holly Mersky, then Pamela Marquez.
My name is Cindy Lee. Thank you for listening to my presentation. One of the primary concerns related to 5G is that it will utilize a significantly higher energy frequency of electromagnetic radiation than previous generations of wireless technology. This new frequency is what will allow for the much faster speeds 5G will bring. However, because this technology is so new, the long-term health effects of this specific frequency of radiation are completely unstudied and therefore completely unknown. In February, Senator Richard Blumenthal exposed this lack of research at U.S. From the small amount of research that has been done on 5G frequencies, these frequencies have been shown to interact with human skin in a completely different way than previous generations of wireless technology. Specifically, a group of researchers in Israel have found that human sweat ducts act as a helical antenna for these higher frequencies of radiation, leading to greater absorption of these frequencies. The implications of this new interaction are completely unknown, and current safety standards do not take these factors into account. As a result of these findings, the researchers stated, quote, "We are raising a warning flag against the unrestricted use of sub-terahertz technologies for communication before the possible consequences of public health are explored." To me, this is just another red flag.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Holly Mersky, Pamela Marquez, and then Rourke Vane is our final speaker.
My name is Holly Mersky, and I'm also speaking on 5G. Those of us that have expressed concern over the antennas that have popped up all over the pocket area have all received the same generic response, that the antennas are compliant with the FCC guidelines and the FCC guidelines are safe. The main criticism of the FCC guidelines among the scientific community is that the exposure limits are based on a thermal model for damage. This means that the radiation is not strong enough to raise your core temperature. It is assumed safe, which is not the case. Any other potential mechanism for harm is ignored. If no thermal, if non-thermal levels of RF radiation negatively affect our brain, sorry, function, your self-function, or any other function of your body, it is not being considered by the FCC limits. Simple interpretations: if it's not cooking you, it's safe, which we've seen in schools in Canada and such where children have had heart attacks and died of heart attacks because of the radiation, the Wi-Fi that they put into the schools. That was so much. The means of our safety, the safety of future generations, and the safety of all biological life exposed to these antennas, rest on the assumption that the only way RF radiation can cause harm is by heating up the tissue. Many scientists and medical professionals are extremely uncomfortable with that assumption. So am I. Hundreds of studies have already demonstrated biological effects from non-thermal levels of exposure. The article from The Lancet explicitly states, "Prevention of tissue heating by radio frequency electromagnetic radiation is now proven to be ineffective in providing biological and physiological interference." For some reasons, the FCC refuses to acknowledge that these studies are relevant despite the concerns raised by the scientific community. Another criticism of the FCC guidelines is that the way they were developed over 20 years ago and are based on the research that is even older than that. Many of the studies used to develop these guidelines evaluated very short time, minutes or hours.
Your comments, your time is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Pamela Marquez. Pamela Marquez, and then Rourke Vane is our final speaker.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, city council. Rick Jennings, I wanted to just give a shout out to your little grandbabies. Be very proud of them, and God bless them. In 2011, the International Agency for Research on Cancer, part of the World Health Organization, classified, oh, excuse me, I forgot to put this down, classified radio frequency radiation, the type of radiation emitted by cell phones and cell antennas as possibly carcinogenic to humans. One study referenced a 40% increased risk for gliomas, which is a type of malignant brain cancer for heavy cellphone users classified as 30 minutes per day over a 10-year period. People with antennas very close to their home will be exposed to significantly higher levels of radiation whenever they are home, potentially 24/7. We do not want to live near something that can potentially give us cancer. When it comes to cell phones and wireless routers, we have the choice of whether or not we want to expose ourselves to that risk. With these antennas, we have no choice. The antennas are being installed without permission, without warning, and there is apparently nothing we can do about it. We must either accept the risks and reduction in property values or be forced out of our homes. This cannot possibly be what the city council has envisioned for its constituency. We are asking you to take, today, to take actions on behalf of those who do not want these antennas near our homes and give us some recourse for having them removed or preventing them from being installed in the first place. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker, and Rourke Vane is our next speaker.
Good evening, council members. I'm an ex-IT manager, and one of my responsibilities, in fact, two of my responsibilities for rolling out networks statewide, were to pay attention to getting the networks done on time and to take care of my customers, the clients that we had out there. I had to do accommodations for them, including low-vision aid, you know, ergonomic, low-radiation monitors. That was one of my responsibilities, too. And I'm asking you people who control the city of Sacramento and what goes on here to take a look at what's going on with the networks that are being installed. In my neighborhood, I've been in Greenhaven for 40 years. We've got these 5G antennas going up, and then we have these new mast antennas that have gone up, too, that are hot with 4G. I have an RF meter, and I measured them, and it is, they are really smoking when it comes to the RF energy that's being emitted, and nothing's being done about it. At the same time, I live on Havenside Drive. We've got Comcast coming down the road. They are working on my side of the street, and they're pulling new fiber optic cable. So I'm going to have a fiber optic cable system supposedly drawn to the house so I can have gigahertz speed, fiber net connection. But we're not done yet. What about AT&amp;T and MCI? We need to step back. We need to have a moratorium on what's going on and take a look. How is this all being installed? How attractive is it? What's it doing for our property values? Not to mention the health of people, like, you know, children. It's really disconcerting to me that we've allowed this to happen in our beautiful city, that we aren't putting any controls on it and that we aren't trying to take an analytical approach to slowing down and seeing what's going on. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming tonight. Thank you. I want to turn it over to Councilmember Jennings for a comment, please.
Thank you, mayor, and I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight to speak their mind as far as how you feel about what's going on, whether it's related to your health or to your grandkids' health, or your children's health, or to your property values, or whatever potential impact that these antennas are having. My commitment to you is that we will not stop communicating with you. I've already heard very clearly that the FCC has and other entities have as well. We will not do that, and so we're going to work together with our IT department to get a better understanding of where we are right now and what answers that we can give back to you. And I would like to say, within the next seven to 10 days, I will schedule a meeting with everyone that you'd like to bring to that meeting in the Greenhaven Pocket community so it can be convenient to everyone to come there, and I'm hoping at that point in time we can bring in the resident experts that can answer the questions that you have, that you've given to us tonight. You okay with that? Okay? So, mayor, we will take, work with the city manager and the city attorney, and we will work together with our IT department, and then we'll work with the FCC, with Verizon, and get the experts there so we can answer these questions once and for all.
You have a very good council member, a great council member who'll make sure
Thank you again for coming.
communicates with you. Okay? Councilman Carr?
Now, we did extensive work on this with SMUD.
Okay.
When we were deploying
No, we did extensive work on this with SMUD, when we were deploying the smart meters, and they have a databank of work on the issue. So, city manager and city attorney, you might want to start with them so you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Members and members of the public, we're going to adjourn this evening in memory of Officer Tara O'Sullivan. Thank you all for coming.[1785.71][1785.71]